The Personnel Policy Curriculum Committee meeting, which was newly noticed on July 1st, 2015, posting a notification.
Of the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. Health message, actually Carla asked if she could do the health message this time.
Well, my health message tonight is eight great reasons to get more sleep. One of the first important reasons is your immune system will work better. We know that sleep is necessary for normal functioning immune system. Numerous studies have shown that our immune system works best when we get adequate sleep. In fact, several studies have demonstrated poor responses to vaccines for influenza and hepatitis when subjects were sleep deprived. Your memory will improve and your golf game may be better.
There you go. Yeah.
It has been fully demonstrated that sleep is necessary for memory consolidation. Actually, when research subjects got a good night's sleep, after learning new information, they performed much better on testing than those who did not sleep. Number three, you'll feel better emotionally. We know that chronically sleep deprived people have much higher incidence of anxiety disorders and depression. This is probably due to the sleep's critical role in emotional processing, which appears to mainly take place during REM, dream sleep, but by no means is confined to only this stage of sleep. Number four, your brain will be cleaner. Let's see. It is during sleep that our brain performs several regenerative processes. The brain's neuroplasticity, the ability to form new pathways and connections, is very much sleep dependent. And it also, your brain also performs its housekeeping chores during that time. You help repair and grow new tissue. It is during sleep that we produce more of our growth hormone. In fact, this production is mostly, is most closely linked in deep, slow, slow wave sleep. In children, this is intimately linked to their growth. In adults, it's very important in tissue repair. You'll help stabilize your blood sugar level. We know that sleep deprived people have higher incidence of diabetes. This is because sleep deprivation leads to insulin resistance. As a result, insulin is unable to get into the cells and exert its influence. You just may want to lose weight. Want to reduce the waistline? Get seven to eight hours of sleep. Insufficient sleep leads to excessive production of the hormone called ghrelin. Ghrelin. This is an appetite promoting hormone, the hunger hormone. It also impedes production of leptin and appetite suppressing hormone. And number eight, you may live longer. Study after study has shown that those of us who chronically sleep less than seven hours a night do not live as long and were far more likely to develop high blood pressure, strokes, and heart attacks. So there you go. That's why sleep is important.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay. The ESEA waiver. Dr. Earhart?
This is ESEA stands for Elementary Secondary Education Act. And this is an agenda item we have on that really kind of looks at big issues that are going typically with federal or state legislation. That impact public education. So, ESEA, that original law was passed 50 years ago. It had its 50th birthday party this year. It was passed in 1965 under the Johnson administration. And ESEA is, again, the federal effort to support public education, in particular in the areas of reading and math, for kids who are disadvantaged. So it's really to help make sure that kids of poverty or disadvantaged kids, those kids in subgroup populations, they move forward with student achievement. Now, this law is intended to be reauthorized or revised or redeveloped every six years. However, 2001 was the last time it was reauthorized, even though in 2007 it was supposed to be reauthorized. Somehow it got muddled up in Congress and they haven't passed a new version of it since. So during that time, everyone knows that the 2001 No Child Left Behind, which is the last version of it, it was really a revolutionary effort to really improve and move student achievement forward again for kids who were struggling, weren't moving ahead. But there were a fair amount of problems in it. And most people in education all admit that it needs to be changed, there needs to be fixes, it needs to be redeveloped. But however, Congress hasn't been able to quite get together and really figure out what those accommodations should be. They just kind of keep arguing about it. So then again, the current Department of Education did try and respond to some of those issues. For example, one of the things the law said in 2014, everyone would be proficient on your state test. And everybody knows that everybody's not the same and everybody is not going to be proficient. But if you weren't, then you'd get all sorts of punitive kind of measures. So what they've done is created waivers that if you're making efforts to improve other things around that, then you won't get the big black mark of No Child Left Behind. So I looked again, well, where is the reauthorization now going? Is Congress making any forward momentum in that area at all? And there are a couple efforts afoot to try and reauthorize the law that is way overdue. And Lamar Alexander and Patty Murray from the Senate have a bipartisan proposal that's out there that's trying to, again, reauthorize this particular law. In particular also then, the House side, also under the leadership of John Klein, he's the chairman of the House Education Committee, they have announced that they're going to put it on the floor and start debating it and doing some work on it too. So we have two versions out there again. I just wanted to take a few seconds and go over what's new on the horizon. The House version, from Chairman Klein, wants to look at using federal money. You can accept federal money if you qualify, again, for numbers of poverty and all of those kinds of things, but then you wouldn't have to follow any of the regulations. Now, that's very popular, but remember a few times ago when I talked about originally when they started this law, a lot of the money kind of did go not necessarily to support kids of poverty and help them with their reading and math, but they started building swimming pools and built new gymnasiums. And so there were, so there's been a lot of regulations that have been developed. So one of the new ones is say, well, you can have the money, but you don't have the regulations. That would make it a lot easier for us that have to work with it, but I don't think that's going to happen. But that's one of the suggestions that are out there. There are another one that's out there on the House bill that looks at federal vouchers. So again, if you were a child of poverty, your family qualified, then you could have a federal voucher and then you could maybe apply that money to go to a private school. That, I would suspect, may not go through too, because then there aren't the same kind of requirements for public school and private school. So these are political ideations that are out there. Now, the Senate version under Alexander and Murray, their recommendations for change would look pretty somewhat familiar to what we have. They still would want kids to be tested twice a year in reading and in math in grades third through eighth. However, they want to create a little bit more flexibility in the law and perhaps some more intelligent, I would say, application of it. For example, if you're an ELL student, English language learner, the old law says that you may have just immigrated to our country and you may be, let's say you're from Israel, and all of a sudden you're, after a year, you're supposed to test the same way as someone who's been a native speaker. And that likelihood of that, and so it's not equal apples to apples comparison. So looking at how you would treat students who are English language learners, some of our students who are special education students, looking at more realistic in terms of where their readiness level is, as opposed to just comparing them all the same. So that's one of the things that's out there. There is an effort to, I think on both sides, to reduce some of the red tape. Right now, operating, and Julie DeCoco, you're going to hear from a little bit later tonight, does a lot of work, she's our title coordinator. Every single year, it just gets more complicated and more complicated. And just a quick case in point is our whole reimbursement for our federal money that we get was being held up. They kept sending, rejecting it. We tried to make a claim for it. And it was because we bought an item, a poster set, for $47.59 that was used in a professional development training on new English and math standards. It's perfectly appropriate to use. I mean, it's, but they kept saying no. And we, you know, we had like hundreds of thousands of dollars in reimbursement rating up on this $47,000, or $47.57, and it's because we didn't use the word "training" in the reimbursement. It was just a ridiculous, and it was all under the professional development. It took us three months to even get us to quite call us back and tell us how to do that. So it's pretty convoluted and pretty complicated, and we certainly would welcome some reduction in all the red tape and paperwork. So that's kind of out there. My particular opinion on the, how optimistic I am that a new authorization of the law is going to happen this summer is not. They sound pretty much at odds with each other, so, but they're going to go at it again and try and see if they can come up with something, so. But I don't, I don't think that it's, it'll happen. So what always happens, the old requirements stay in place until they write a new law. And the piece that is kind of giving us a little wiggle room right now at least is the waivers. So that's the ESEA report.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sticking to it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next, we are talking about the revised, review of revised board policy 5122 and 5130. Ms. Carlson?
Yeah, if I could just begin. We were going to have some board policy changes and admin reg changes, and this due in part to the boundary line changes that have been approved. We're going to look at moving this, if we could, to the full board for July 14th. It's very timely. And Tammy's going to, Carlson's going to explain this in just a little bit. Tammy is our go-to person as far as boundary lines and other things in the district here, but she lives and breathes the boundary lines and has been very instrumental in our meet and confer in our open sessions we've had at the schools regarding boundary lines. So Tammy's going to provide you with some information and then you'll have an opportunity for some additional questions. Tammy?
Thanks. Hello? Oh, thank you, Dr. Sperry. First of all, I'd like to apologize. We missed the board policy 5130 in the packets that were emailed out to.
Okay.
So this is the policy. Thank you, Steve. I'm just going to briefly go over what the changes are in each of the areas so that you are aware of what was presented to you in the packet. And the reason that we are doing this is because of, as Dr. Sperry said, the boundary line changes is the key piece. And then Wisconsin Act 20, 2013 Wisconsin Act 20, did change several policies that are also affected by the boundary line change. So we're making all of those changes together so that we can bring that all forward as the new policy. We had been working through some procedural issues with the changes to that law, and so we're now bringing it forward now that we've tested them out and know that those are the appropriate way to handle that process. So in board policy 5122, which is the public school choice policy, we have changed that to reflect the four different public school choice programs that are actually offered through the state of Wisconsin. Previously, we did not clearly identify which programs were covered under that public school choice. And so what we've asked to do in this incarnation is to actually identify each of the four programs and then have a separate administrative regulation for each program so you can clearly see each program separately and not have them all lumped together. And as programs change, then we don't have to change the full administrative regulation. We can go straight to the administrative regulation for that program only. And the four different programs that we do have is, the first one is the Full Time Open Enrollment Program, and that is under Administrative Regulation 5122.1. And I apologize. Under Board Policy 5122, the packet that you received, we did double check and we realized that the gender identity piece of the nondiscrimination agreement was not included in the packet that was provided to you. So the one for the board will have the gender identity added to that nondiscrimination piece. And then with the board policy, we did also identify the priority for placement for the different programs. As the, at the end of that policy, we received direction from the Department of Public Instruction as to which students get priority when there's not enough space in a course for everyone. And so we use the guidelines from the Department of Public Instruction and actually place that in policy. So then, moving on to the Full Time Open Enrollment, we did remove any kind of references to part-time open enrollment. With the Wisconsin law change, we did have part-time open enrollment was eliminated, and it was replaced with a program called Course Options. And so we created a separate administrative regulation for that Course Options program. So any references to part-time open enrollment is deleted from the open enrollment policy because it's now a separate program. We did remove the reapplication procedure with the new boundary, and this is the piece that's tied in with the boundary line change. With the new boundary line pathway system, we are now no longer going to be requiring open enrollment students to reapply. For open enrollment to middle school, they just get to path on with the students at the elementary school that they're already at. This gives them the opportunity to course schedule along with their peers and be able to attend any kind of orientations at the middle school level. Current procedures, open enrollment families who had to reapply for open enrollment weren't even notified of their school placement based on the state deadline dates until the end of the school year, June 6th. So this way, they can know what school they're going to do the course selections along with their classmates. And then the new administrative regulations then is Administrative Regulation 5122.2. That's the Course Options program. This is replacing the part-time open enrollment. Students enrolled full-time in a Wisconsin public school district can apply to take up to two courses at a time at any educational institution in Wisconsin approved by the Department of Public Instruction at no cost to the students. We, as I said in the memo, we have developed procedures with the high schools. We did have a meeting with staff that were directly involved in these processes to determine what the appropriate procedures would be and how to handle that. Those are now identified in this administrative regulation. We, and many times you ask, well, who pays for these programs? This particular program is paid for by the district the student is attending full-time. So if we have a student full-time open enrolled into our district and wants to take a course at their home district for some reason, this would be the program Course Options that they would use to do that. And we, as the district that the student is attending full-time, we actually pay for that course to the district that they're attending. This also, another question that usually comes up with this, does this replace the Youth Options program? This does not replace the Youth Options program. It is a separate program that students can apply to attend schools. And then, moving on to Administrative Regulation 5122.3, this is our part-time attendance for home-based private education students. So students who are attending homeschooling are allowed to take up to two courses a semester in any public school district in the state of Wisconsin. They must meet the standards of admission for the course, and according to the state of Wisconsin, students do not technically start homeschooling until first grade. So this would be eligible for any students in first through 12th grade. This is a program that had been allowed previously. However, prior to the law change, this was only open to homeschool students at the high school level and only open to homeschool students in their resident district. So this new law change did open that up to any public school district in the state of Wisconsin and opened up elementary and middle school grades to this program. So we're reflecting those changes in this new administrative regulation. And then the final administrative regulation tied to public school choice is the 5122.4. This is part-time attendance for private school students. This policy did not change with the Wisconsin Act. We just now moved it from the original 5122.1 where everything was put together into its own separate policy. And so this particular one, you must be a Janesville resident, enrolled in a private school, and you can attend up to two courses per semester at any public high school in your district of attendance. Since we do have more than one high school, this does mean it is not based on where the family lives. They can attend any public high school in this, in the district. And then with the 5130 boundary line change, that is the one that I handed out to you, the board policy, just the two things that we added to that policy are the adding the word "elementary" to the neighborhood school concept. So we clarify that that neighborhood school concept is what we utilize at the elementary level. And then we added wording regarding the new middle and high school pathway system. So those are bolded in there. That's the only change to the actual policy itself. The administrative regulation, we did remove all references to the elementary option areas. That was that area in the district where there was not an assigned elementary school and the district was required to place students based on space availability. With the new map that was approved by the Board of Education, we will no longer have elementary option areas. So those will now all be boundary areas. So there's no longer procedures on how to handle that because it no longer exists. We did clarify that student transfer approvals are now for a student's school, full school career. Previously, it was only for the school level that you applied for the transfer for. Now, a student who applies for a transfer at the elementary level will adopt the pathway system for that approved transfer as long as they continue to reside at the address that they approved under. So we've changed the wording in regards to that. We've also modified student services titles and the director of instruction title in there, so some just cleanup of those particular pieces. We've identified the school associations with the pathway system for middle and high school. So that is clearly identified in the administrative regulation now, which schools go to which middle and high school. We've also clarified an automatic approval if a family moves and asks to stay at a school, that that approval is automatically approved unless there are attendance, discipline, or special education issues. And we outline the procedures on what to follow if there are those issues as to whether or not the move can be approved. We did also clarify where the transfer forms can be obtained for a transfer request. Those are available at all of the schools in our district, as well as the District Educational Services Center, and the timeframes for turning those in. We are going to be opening up the transfer timeframe this upcoming school year per the request of the Board of Education. It is a one-time only situation due to the boundary line change. Normally, our transfer timeframe is December 1st through the 15th. This year only, we will be opening it up for November 1st through the, through December 15th because of the communication piece and the changes of boundaries. So, oh, I did want to make another note. We did find a typographical situation as well. On page six of 10 of the Administrative Regulation 5130.1, there is a header that talks about boundary lines and transfers, middle and high schools. It actually needs to be put below the words "Administrative and Human Services." It was put above in a paragraph that should have been with the elementary piece.
Tammy, can you explain the, why this is so timely? Because we're going to bring this before the board on the 14th, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Sperry. The reason that we do need to have this in place is as board policy changes do need to be run through the board twice. We have the one meeting in July, and then the first board meeting in August is our hope for this. The reason that is important is because we are going to be doing a individual letter to every student in the district that states, here is your home address and the boundary, the new boundary lines for your home address. Here is the school you're currently attending and the pathway system for the school you're currently attending, and here's the procedure for doing a transfer if you would like to do so. Because we need to have these policies in place to be able to move forward with that process, and because of the timeliness, if we're doing the transfer timeframe starting November 1st now instead of December, we're going to need to have these letters out to families by October 15th. So this means that we need to use the month of September to work on these letters. So we want to make sure that we have the policies in place so that if there are any questions that families have regarding the process, we can refer to the appropriate policies and show how we're actually making the decisions on where a student would be placed. Students who are in programs such as the Challenge Program that is at a specialized building level, or students who are in a special education program that's at a school-specific location, those students, once they are completing, once they've completed that specialized program, they actually return back to the pathway of their home address. And so we want to make sure that we have all of these procedures in place and policies in place so that if there are any questions, people can refer to, we can refer them to the policies. Yes?
For those, for those students who go through the Challenge Program and then revert back to the home address, are they still able to transfer or are they, is it too late for them?
Nope. We, and that's what we're going to be identifying in those letters. We are also working on making sure that that's also clear for our special education place students as well. What will happen is they will be eligible to request a school transfer during the transfer timeframe. So if they're in eighth grade this current year, that transfer timeframe will be November 1st through the, through December 15th. In the future, that transfer timeframe will go back to its original transfer timeframe, December 1st through the 15th. And our current procedure right now is all fifth grade students and all eighth grade students in the district actually had already been given a letter saying, here's the school that we've assigned you to for high school or middle school, and here's the process for doing that transfer. Those were actually handed out to students at conferences. So this is just opening it up this first year to everyone to make sure that every single family in the district is aware of the change, the boundary line change, and how it will personally affect their family.
Thank you. I have another, do you have a question? I don't want to hog.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I don't know if these two things are related, and so I just, it's something that came up on my WASBA legislative update. And it was about how there's a provision, they're talking about tweaking it, but as I understand it now, or maybe I'm, I don't understand it. A private school student may be able to participate in public sports? And is this, is any of this something that we need to be looking at in regards to this boundary or these course options or the, you know?
Sure. Our current policy does allow part-time students to participate in extracurricular activities. We do have a board policy in regards to that, that talks about opportunities, extracurricular opportunities. And we do allow our part-time students to participate in those as long as it is allowed by the program that they're in. So the WIAA does not allow part-time enrollment or part-time students to be involved in WIAA athletics. So those particular students would not be eligible to do that. Some of our clubs that do competitions such as forensics and things like that, their ability to take part-time students is based on whether or not those competitions that the students are participating in would accept part-time students in the district or not.
Okay.
And that's part of the policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other? All right, well, thank you very much. Now, we need, we need a motion, don't we? But we don't really have a, we don't have a forum, so what do we, so can we recommend that it just go to, put on the, okay? All right. So let's do that. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So the next on the agenda is the review of the new board policy 6464. A lot of symmetry to that policy. 6464. On the Global Education Achievement Certificate.
I'll start and then I'll introduce Ms. DeCoco. I just returned from a culminating activity at Craig High School. There were eight students from Guadalajara, Mexico, eight School District of Janesville students, and one student from Kosovo. He could not get his visa, so he just arrived today on the end day, but he wanted to come so badly, and he'll stay longer. They participated in a class called 21st Century Thinking Skills for a Global World. And it was great to see the activities that they had put together. One young man, they build robots, LEGO Robotics, was one of the activities for the week. And one young man, an advanced student, I'm sure, built a robot that could do a Rubik's Cube in like a minute, minute and a half. So it was fascinating to watch and see what all of our kids are capable together as they work together. So as I thought about the activity, I thought, this is what the Wisconsin Global Education Certificate is really about. Certificate is really about. This is one of the activities that could help students gain this certificate when they graduate from one of our high schools. And we hope to offer more activities as well. So at the last PPC meeting, we looked at samples from school districts and talked about those. And the policy itself falls under the view of the curriculum area. So Julie DeCook is here. She worked on the policy with Colleen Anzrude and brought a SAC proposal forward a couple of weeks ago. And we reviewed that to check the policy, to make sure it's accurate and it makes sense for all of us, the policy and the admin regs. It was also sent to Attorney Moore. He checked through it as well. And so Julie will review it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schulte. So you can see at the board policy is really an overview of our, fulfilling our mission through a commitment to global competency in our students and our graduates. And to encourage that, we would be offering this opportunity for students to achieve the Global Education Achievement Certificate and the record of that on their transcripts. In the admin reg, it lays out the plan for how to do that, the outcomes for the students to investigate the world beyond their immediate environment, recognize their own and others' perspectives, communicate their ideas effectively and with diverse audiences, and translate their ideas and findings into action to improve conditions. It lays out the coursework they would need, so four credits in one world language with options for students whose native language is not English, to count English courses, four credits in courses with global content. One of those credits may include an additional foreign language. The students need to do eight reflections demonstrating cultural literacy, and those can include reflections on books, art, music, or film. The state requires that a minimum of four of the eight be on books. Colleen and I are suggesting that a minimum of one reflection be on art, music, or film. However, the state leaves that open. We thought that was more reflective of our commitment to the arts and having kids be well-versed in a variety of activities. They also need to participate in school-wide global activities such as the 21st Century Skills class that Dr. Schulte just described, and have a minimum of 20 hours' work on global service projects. We would set up the documentation using a Google system, and students would submit their documentation and their reflections through this form. Their reflections could take the form of a video recording, a digital scrapbook, written reflection, et cetera. And then an established global scholar committee would review each student's file to verify that they have met all of the requirements. The global scholar committee would include currently myself, the coordinator of world language and ELL, Dr. Ernest, currently the coordinator of secondary social studies, a student services representative who is also part of the credit eval committee, and world language and/or social studies teachers. Each of those coordinators could also identify a designee. And then that committee would submit names to the superintendent of the state to receive the certificate. DPI, the Department of Public Instruction, actually generates the certificates, and we would make that mark on their transcripts. Students would need to submit their files to us by the end of third quarter in the year that they're graduating. And you can see that the forms that we've given them both to plan and to document are following. One note is that on page two of five of the administrative regulation, AP European History is missing. We need to have that added. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
No, this looks good to me. As I was reading it, I was thinking about, about some of the art opportunities for you, but you have, I mean, like as far as foods and things like that and cultural classes are concerned, but you have them here, so that was, I mean, it was like you're anticipating my, my thoughts about it. But, no, I don't have any questions, so it sounds great to me. So should we just move that on to the board then too for the July 14th meeting?
Sure.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Okay, next up is our discussion on just cause. And, I forgot, I have to get my stuff out of there. Commissioner Cork, did you want to go ahead and talk to us about that a little bit more?
Well, again, I'd like to say how important just cause is to the employees and, you know, the district as a whole. It gives everybody the opportunity to know what's on the table. You're basically already following the just cause standards. I think having it laid out specifically in the district is very important. That is going to, you know, help morale. It's going to help everybody understand what's expected. You know, it ensures that the rules and standard are, standards are consistently applied. And in the event of, you know, penalties, they shall match the infraction, and so there is no guesswork. And, you know, you will have the steps laid out. I mean, I've said, I've said everything before and I've given the handles before, it just, it just makes sense to apply this and have it spelled out for the district. I think you'll see a huge boost in morale. There is no fiscal implication and it's very necessary, and I'd like to see it move on and action taken fairly quickly.
So you gave us a list of things, I don't know if everybody still has, has that, about changing some of the language in it.
That's something different.
Oh, okay.
It's a different thing.
Okay. Anyway, so you gave us some recommendations for changing the language.
Yep.
I know that personally, the recommendation that 6.02 corrective action.
And we crossed that off.
Okay.
Yeah, we have requested that 6.02 was crossed off.
Because I don't think that's, that's the.
Probably a little excessive.
The duty of the PPC committee. And, so.
And removing for arbitrary and capricious reasons and replacing it with unless it just cause exists to support the decision, those are, those are necessary changes. Arbitrary and capricious is, it's not as cut and dried as just cause is. I mean, like I said, you're going to, these are the standards, this is how it's applied, and this is, this is what we need to do. All of these things that are on this list except for 6.02, well, there's just the two, or one, two, three, four, five, should, should be applied. And I know I've been talking about this for several, several meetings and several school board meetings, and I would like it to be considered again.
By the full board?
By the full board.
Let us hash it out.
It's completely necessary, and I'd like to get it out there for discussion and action.
From what I understand, to just cause is kind of a standard used in situations where you have to go to the unemployment office or file for any sort of compensation or unemployment compensation.
It's based on the just cause standards. That's, and, and if you follow the just cause standards, if the employee has violated everything and everything is documented and using the just cause standards, unemployment will be denied. And I have proof of that from just my, my background with the union and, and representing people as, you know, the vice president in chief steward. It, it works. There's, you won't end up with a mess like Rock County is going through right now with the land vatter case using the arbitrary and capricious standard. They didn't understand that, they weren't remediate, or they weren't admonished properly, and now it's going to bounce back to the circuit court. So I think it will save a lot of problems. I mean, hopefully you won't need to use that, but having the just cause standard in there, cut and dried, it's good for the employees and it's good for the district.
Okay. All right. So we can, yes, sir?
If I may, from what I'm understanding, I'm going to go back a little bit on the, maybe on the history, if you will. But employers have two possible methods for operating, like the personnel side of employment in a business or an organization. One is to have employment at will, or the other one is to have just cause. And several years ago, when we were first going through creating an employee handbook and also the grievance procedure, the information was run through Boardman and Clark. They were the law firm or the legal counsel that was providing us their recommendations at that particular time. And they had advised in our handbook to include at-will employees and then use good and sufficient cause as opposed to just cause, because they said you can't necessarily use the two of them in a particular document together. So that's what was done, and it was carried out that way. I have looked over the seven steps that you had provided at our last meeting, and I do believe that we have those same things that are in our corrective action as what you're describing. If, if you're asking for this document to be, for the changes to be made in our employee handbook, my advice right now or suggestion would be for our legal counsel, the board's legal counsel, to review what this would look like before we would necessarily take a vote on. I just want to make sure that the wording in here that would coincide with what we currently have or what we intended to have when the, when the other board approved this a few years ago. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cork.
Well, this is, this is something that I have gone over clearly, and it's been thoroughly researched and, and through, you know, the union's legal counsel that these are appropriate measures. So I, I guess it would just be rehashing something that, I mean, there's the, you know, the district council and then there, you know, there's, there's the union council, and I think, I think that it, that it stands and that it's, it's.
Well, I think you may have two, two different legal opinions here. Then the board's going to have to make a decision on which legal opinion they're going to select, but I do believe it would be beneficial for us to do that.
Dr. Schulte?
Just a small correction. The legal counsel is not the district's legal counsel. It's, that counsel is hired by the board. It's your counsel. So you would want to take advantage of the services that are provided for the board. And we have excellent labor attorneys that we've used, and certainly I would suggest that you would want to use them in the future as well.
Okay. So, so what does, so I know that although you can't really, you know, use this, I know that Commissioner Thompson wants this to move to the full board for discussion. And, you know, so really, all we would need is to, to look over just cause and to really just make a comparison to our own policy, right? Because you say that you've already had, that's already a legal opinion. That was an opinion of a few years ago, right? So I don't doubt that the, that the opinion's changed. Am I correct?
No, I'm thinking the specific wording that is in this document, if you want this to be in the employee handbook, this is currently not in there.
I see.
And anytime we're running something through or into the employee handbook, we want to get a legal opinion on it.
Well, and the handbook was just approved one or two board meetings ago. So you just approved the handbook.
Right.
It is reviewed typically on a quarterly basis, but I believe the language from the handbook are in contracts, right?
Yeah.
For 1516. So, you mean it's a, you would be planning or bringing it to the board for future time for 1617?
Okay. Okay.
But it isn't an action item tonight.
Yeah, I thought it was to be an action item.
I thought the last time we decided that it was going to be an action item.
And I didn't catch it when I, when I, they sent, so I'm sorry about that.
Oh, and that, I didn't see it as an action item from last time.
So, so we're, well, we don't have enough to, we don't have enough bodies. But, so what we can, what we can do though is to send that to our, to the legal team, is that correct? And then we could put this on the agenda to move as an, as an action item?
We can put it on the agenda for August.
For August as an action item.
I wouldn't put it forward to the legal team though until we know how the board rules on it.
Okay. So wait, so, so wait a minute, so we have to wait until, you mean, till the entire board rules on it?
I would bring it forward to the board.
The entire board, not, not just the committee? Okay. Okay, so can we, so is there any reason why we can't just recommend it be brought to the entire board and then since the legal thing comes afterwards?
You can ask the board president to put it on.
Okay.
As an agenda item.
Okay.
And bring it back to the committee.
Wouldn't we want the opinion, so we have both opinions on the table to discuss it at the same time?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious as about the.
That's confusing me.
So, so we would, so if we bring it to the full board and the board approves the changes, then you send it to legal counsel?
No. What I'm saying is, and my understanding of what our board president wants to do is to make sure there's board support before we send it forward for legal counsel.
Oh, I think.
Is there enough interest in the board, is what I'm hearing from him, to, to be looking into this?
I see.
Because it was just, I mean, you all just approved it. The board just approved it, the handbook.
Yeah.
I, I think because if, if the board doesn't understand something as, you know, others do, I think having the other opinion along with, with these recommendations for them to get the whole picture and understand what's going on, I think that would be beneficial. Now, I've heard just the opposite, that there is interest in moving this, this forward, so.
So, so here's what, here's what our, I think our options are. Because this came, because this came on our radar before the whole form thing, right?
Uh huh.
So we can fill out a form and have it, and he'll, and, and he'll give it to the PPC committee.
Uh huh.
Okay? And then, I mean, it's, it's.
We're already here.
I know, I know we're already here, but that's.
Yeah, we don't want to go, want to go circular.
Yeah.
I think maybe we can have a conversation with the board president to, to understand his thinking on this.
Okay. On how he wants us to proceed with it?
Correct.
Okay.
My understanding is that he wants the direction to come from the board to the committee when we're pursuing different issues that will take some time or some revenue.
But didn't he bump that, already bumped that to us to discuss when I brought it up at board? Didn't he bump it to the committee to discuss and then?
Oh, I think you're right.
And then bring it back? The first time I brought that up at the board meeting, he said, let's discuss this.
I think we did go through this.
We did, we already, that would just be dragging this out a little further than it needs to be.
And then proper procedure would be to have it on this agenda for August as an action item.
Okay.
And then for it to go to the board.
Okay.
I do not support it going to the attorney beforehand.
Okay.
I think our board is, is, does understand the handbook that they voted for. In fact, I hope they did, otherwise they'd be asking questions.
Well, I don't think they completely understand just cause, and I'm definitely, no, they don't understand what arbitrary and capricious means. So, I think to have both, both sets of understandings from legal, I think that would be beneficial to the board, being able to make an informed decision for this particular item.
Well, we can, we can definitely get it on the board agenda for August, okay? As an action item.
As an action item, okay.
Yes, yes, okay. And then we can, and it might be best to talk about the whole, the legal part with the other two people here as well.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we'll also talk to the board president.
Yeah, yeah.
To make sure we're understanding what his direction is.
Okay, okay, all right, announcements and updates?
May I share one thing?
Sure.
I do want to introduce Tina Johnson tonight. She's sitting to my left, and she's our new assistant human resource director for the school district. She is replacing Mary Ann Cale, and Tina's all excited. She's on her second day, so she came back today after her first day on the first. And I just wanted to make sure that you can put the name with the face, and you'll be seeing Tina around a lot more.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, nice to see you. Welcome back on your second day, right?
Yes.
So, where do you come from and...
Geneva.
Okay.
Been down there for, well, I've been in the education system for about 20 years and saw the opportunity and decided to leave my former school of nine years and come here. So, I'm excited to be here and looking forward to all the growth.
Great, and what did you do there in Lake Geneva?
I was the director for the RTI and PBIS programs at our school as well as all of the music theater, fine arts, band, all of them.
Okay, great.
The entire fine arts program.
Wonderful, thank you.
I have three things, and first of all, have I got a show for you since you have a music background. Phantom of the Opera, it's our summer musical. We do this with other schools, districts in Rock County. It's wildly popular and it's an award-winning program for our kids. So, that is the weekend of the 17th of July and the 24th that's coming up. Also, we have a car show again this year at Parker High School, Saturday, July 25th, and that supports Rockin Robotics, our robotics program. And finally, I did want to point out, we do have our board goals up there. We do survey our staff twice a year. And the first survey of the year, we have reported, you can see in green. And Commissioner Cork, you said the morale is bad, but that's not what our survey results show. We have a four point nine out of a five-point scale. And that's really quite good. And we will, certainly want to continue that as we move forward. Our next survey, probably the results will be coming out in maybe a month or so, I would think.
Okay, so a question about the surveys.
Sure.
On the surveys, are they expected to put down their building that they work in?
Yes, the building is identified. The surveys do not come to us, they go to a third party.
Okay.
So, we don't, we never get to touch the results.
Okay, and do they identify their, if they're a teacher, what level they teach?
Well, that would be revealed by the building, yeah.
Just the building?
Third grade teacher.
Right, yeah, but if they're at Adams, we know they're an elementary teacher.
Does it, does it identify their subject matter?
Nope.
No.
Nope, nor their name, it's anonymous on purpose.
Okay.
It only sorts by building so that we know who is, by what building that they're associated with, so the building principal can look at what the results mean for them.
Okay, and who's the third party it goes to?
It goes through the Suter Group, and they outsource it to, it used to be, I think, the University of Florida. I don't know if they're still using that gentleman there or not. Kind of lost track to who they send it to, but I can find out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so the result is just based on the people that returned the survey?
It's, yes, we, results are from our employees and...
How many employees responded?
It's a pretty high number.
It's very high, out of 1,400, I want to say, don't quote me, but I think it's around 1,200
Yeah.
that have responded on it. We can get the exact number.
Exact number, but employees have been really good to get it filled out. It's, we've been doing it for over seven years, so people are used to doing it now. So, we have really good results with our staff. With parents, we don't have the numbers that we'd like. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. But we're trying different tactics to get parents to fill out, more parents to fill out this survey as well.
Could we get a copy of that?
Yeah, can we ever see the questions and stuff?
Sure.
Now, and, or, you know, the process?
Could we get that emailed to us to see what it was?
Yeah, is it through Survey Monkey or...
No, but I can, we have a packet, like a report.
Okay.
That's done, so certainly.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see it.
We have the, through the county, something similar here and there, so I just want to see what, right?
If it's similar or not, yeah. And we are doing What's Right in Education in August. I hope the two of you can go, but you'll hear a lot about the survey and other districts that are using the survey as well and how they're using the results.
Okay. Dr. Erhart?
I have one more, Dr. Schulte, you're going to help me remember here.
Uh-oh.
We have a number of initiatives that are going on as we move toward the upcoming school year that we would like to have PPC committee have a chance to listen to and learn and give us feedback and reaction. For example, we brought the STEM initiative to you in May. So, we have some other ones that are coming up. You noticed in the newspaper last Sunday, they did a wonderful job of looking at the personalized learning initiative. We really haven't brought that all to you too, so typically we'd like to do that, so our personalized learning initiative. Dr. Sperry and I just got back from a meeting in which we worked at our project redesign, which is our high school effort. And project redesign usually each year gets a report to the PPC about where we're doing with that. So, we'd like to talk with you about project redesign. We have been working very diligently in the area of reading, and we have our reading/writing blueprint. So, what is the reading/writing blueprint? How is that trying to make sure that we have a very comprehensive plan and how we approach the whole area, a fundamental area of reading and writing and how that works too? And there was one other topic, I believe.
That's what I'm supposed to remember, the one you're not remembering.
I might have remembered. If it would be okay to get those on the agenda, and again, we look at, you know, how big the agenda is, but those are three big initiatives we've been doing a lot of work with. And Kathy, I think there's one more, and as soon as we end the meeting, I'll remember it.
Okay.
But we'd like to try and get those on, certainly within, you know, the next four or five meetings to start to share with you and again, get your feedback and reaction to those big district initiatives that we're putting a lot of time and effort into.
Okay, great, and, okay, thank you.
If that's okay, then we'll kind of work on how to calendar those.
So, I have then, do we have any more updates, first of all? No? Okay, so then I have for future committee agenda items, I have the initiatives. Are we thinking about that in August, or are we thinking about that in September?
Typically, we pick one a meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. So, one...
And historically, what we'd like to do is probably dedicate maybe at least a half an hour's worth of time. So, we can really kind of dig into them, and we're not really rushed. And we typically will bring, you know, people who are in the field working on this is also to share exactly in third grade, this is what this looks like. So, we bring a panel and typically that's been doing a lot of work with that. So, for each of those initiatives, you'd have a panel that would be sharing and updating the PPC and then again, asking, you know, for your reaction and suggestion.
Okay.
Are there other things from your perspective that you'd want the committees to be focusing on?
So, well, so in August, we'll have one of the initiatives? Okay. And then AP results, I think we'll have those. Doctor, or, Doctor, Commissioner Hesselbacher wanted to review the results of this year's AP tests.
Do you get those then?
Yeah, we'll get, all of that is embargoed now because all of it was kind of new and it's how it's worked. So, AP will be coming in, and that would be another, that would be part of project redesign. So, we look at that whole high school effort. But some of those pieces, I want to make sure what's embargoed and what isn't because it's all connected with the new badger testing. But yeah, that would be a part of the project redesign, a big part of what we're doing with high school. So, yes, that would be there.
So, that's, that's good for August, you think? Or is...
Let me, I would say either if we do either reading/writing blueprint in August or project redesign, but I just want to make sure we have all the data and we're ready to talk about that.
Okay.
Personalized learning, we could, that could go in August too. We have a lot of foundational work on that too, so...
Okay.
If you ask me, my brothers, I'd actually do in August the personalized learning and I'd look for the reading/writing blueprint, maybe the next one, and then project redesign.
Okay.
That way, we'd have the most information ready to go with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other future agenda items? We've got just cause for August. Okay, we've got one of the initiatives for August.
Was there something removed that we wanted to talk about? Weighted grades?
Yeah, we're going to, I'm conferring with Commissioner Hesselbacher about that.
All right.
Okay, all right, anything else?
There's one more, but I forgot to remember it.
Okay. All right, great, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, we've reached the end of our agenda. I think, right? Let's adjourn. Oh, shoot, yes, thank you for reminding me. Well, it won't be before a holiday. I can guarantee that.
Why?
Yes, we should all, yes. Okay, so, we're looking into August here, and we have board meetings on the 11th and 25th. Okay, and, let's see here, oh, shoot. What, we used to go, we used to go like the second Monday of the month, right? Isn't that what we were, we got a little off track here in this last, over summer. But does the second Monday, the 10th, work?
The day before...
The board meeting.
The board meeting?
Is that too much? Or would you prefer the 17th?
I'd rather do it the 17th.
That's fine with me, I mean, it's okay with you, Carla, the 17th look good for you? Okay, so, August 17th, 5:15. Okay?
In August's calendar, I want to double check if we got 18 million things right now.
Yeah, I start back to school that day.
Oh, wow. Aha, good, somebody else that uses a hard calendar, yeah.
I use both.
I've tried using both.
What date were you looking at?
August 17th at 5:15.
Let's look from here, from all the trainings and everything.
Okay, yeah, that's a busy time, but yeah, it should work.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. I guess we are adjourned.
I just remembered one other.
Oh, it's too late.
But at some point too, our library, media, and innovators would like to get on the docket, and they're doing a lot of innovative and exciting work. And because we work with Dr. Smiley in the technology department, because they would show you the kinds of work and the kinds of things that they're doing. The whole library is a much different kind of place than what it used to be.
Right.
And maker spaces and all sorts of things coming on. So, they have asked to get on your agenda too, so if that's okay out.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me, great. All right, thank you very much.
Great.
All right, we are adjourned.
Enjoy your holiday weekend.
Thank you.